Living to impact generations, right? Through the Holy Spirit. So I will be talking some about business today, but I'm also going to talk about family. Because no matter where you at, whether you work in a business, whether you own a business, you have family, you're trying to figure out how to pass your faith down. So that's why I chose the title Family, Work, and Calling. So we'll talk about all three of those. At the end, we'll have time for some questions and answers. So if you have some thoughts or questions, we'll be happy to take those at the end and look forward to doing that. The other day, I was reading an article that said there was four keys to happiness. If you have these four things in life, you're more apt to be happy. The number one thing is family. If you have good relationships with your family, your heart's happier. We know that, very obvious. The second thing is if you have good friends. So if you have good friends and things are going good with your friends, your life is happier. The third one was stated a little different than what I thought, but it was a theology of death. So what does that mean by a theology of death? I probably would've stated it differently, but I think it's by that it means that we know what's going to happen when we die. So I think that has to do with our faith in Christ's faith. I have a great hope. I don't have a fear of death. And I don't go out and I'm not a daredevil and try to end my life. At the same time, I know that my best life is yet to come. So that's my theology of death. And the truth is, we're all going to die. But if you don't have a theology of death, and death is the end, then your happiness level goes down. And the fourth is purposeful work. It's probably true of all of us. All of us have had jobs that we just felt like we're a dead end, did not have purpose to them. But when we have purpose to life in our work, then we're happier. And so we'll talk about some of those as we go through. Just to give you a little bit more about myself, this is my family. So in 1982, when I married my wife Diana, I found her when she was 14 years old. But she didn't find me until I was about 20. So I chased her for six years, finally caught her. And so our little two has now become 16 of us. And so, and then we just found out that Trang, our daughter-in-law, is pregnant. And so we'll have our eighth grandchild Thanksgiving. So anyway, this is my little tribe. My parents still live in the same city I do. My brother and sister live in the same city. So my family, I didn't bring the big family picture. The big family picture is 35. So they barely fit in one. So we have the joy of having family all living pretty close together still in Oklahoma City. The company I work for is Hobby Lobby. And I know you don't have context for Hobby Lobby unless you've been to America, because we don't have any in Africa. And so Hobby Lobby is an arts and crafts retailer. And so you can kind of see here, we sell arts and crafts, whether it's painting, flowers, all kinds of crafts, as well as a huge seasonal department. And so, so this is a business that in 1970, my dad started. My dad was working for a company, and he had gone up so and done so well that he only got two days a month off. So he got every other Sunday off. So now my dad's trying to figure out, wow, I'm really successful at work, but what's happening to my family life? And so he had three children. I have a brother and a sister. And so in 1970, he thought, well, maybe I'll start my own business. So in 1970, he went to the bank and borrowed $600. So $600 is not a lot you can do with $600. So he bought a machine that would cut wood. And then wood, and then we just did little mini-frames that you'd put your family pictures in and all that. So when I was nine years old, my dad paid me seven cents to glue frames. Paid my brother seven cents to glue frames. My mom did not get paid. So me and my brother didn't sign up for that deal. We said, no, no, if we're going to glue these frames, we get paid. My mom did not get paid. And my dad had to stay at his job, because the company obviously could not afford him to work. So that was a manufacturing. We actually did it in our home. And so our dining room got converted into kind of like a shop. So we glued the frames, put headers on them, and all that. Then it was in 1972 that we opened our first Hobby Lobby store. It was about the half the size of the room we're in here. This is probably 600 square feet. So it was about half the size of this room. So take half the size of this room, and we put our little arts and craft store. So we started very small in 1972. And then it was in 1975 when my dad decided to quit his job and cut his salary in half. So that was a decision my mom and dad had to make, because my mom had to realize, okay, he's going to only make half. My mom's not getting paid. Me and Steve are getting paid, but we're spending our money on baseball cards and stuff. And so, so they cut their salary. My dad cut his salary in half and to see if he could make a go of Hobby Lobby. And that was 1975. And so, we're going to fast-forward really quick here. In 2018, this year, we'll open 55 new stores. So we have a little over 800. We'll have about 850 stores in this year. So what started on $600 in 1970, with a lot of hard work and the sacrifice. So usually, we honor my mom, because my mom worked for five years without pay. And then when my dad cut his salary in half, she made my clothes and made a lot of sacrifices. So yes, my dad was the brainchild, but if it hadn't been for my mom. And so in our family, we honor my mom. And whenever people come in, we have about 30,000 employees, we let them know, if it wasn't for my mom, you wouldn't have a job, you know? Because she made that sacrifice. But that's the way business starts a lot of times. Many businesses start small. You start by just doing a few things. And so, so that's where we did. So my dad was a preacher's kid. Actually, my grandmother was a tent revivalist. She would pitch her tent. My grandfather, I mean, her father, my great-grandfather. And my grandmother would go and pitch their tents in different cities, hold revivals. And there was a day when a young man walked in, was not a believer, got saved, courted my grandmother, and married her. And so, so now you've got co-preachers of little churches, never more than 50 or 60, very small churches. So that's the way my dad was raised. And if both of your parents are preachers, there's a pretty good chance they're going to want you to be a preacher, all right? So they prayed for six preachers and got five. Guess who wasn't the preacher? My dad, all right? And so, my dad just, he wasn't a good preacher. My dad did not do well in school. He didn't have a lot of book smart, but he's street smart. There's different types of intelligence. So my dad's a very intelligent guy. He just didn't enjoy school. So at a very young age, he, when he got out of high school, he went to work in retail stores. So that's how we got into the retail business. So why did my dad start Hobby Lobby? Couple of reasons. One, he wanted a work-life balance. Again, he only got two days a month off. So he was working six days, seven days, six days, seven days. And even on those days off, sometimes he'd get a call if something happened. If the store flooded, if something happened, he'd still get a call. So he thought, man, I just don't know if I want to, if it's worth it. So, so that's when he started the company in 1970. And he wanted to provide for his family. He felt that's his responsibility. He wanted to provide for his family and all that. So Hobby Lobby obviously was a place for work. And we all know that work is something that God gave us to do. And so work got harder after the fall, but work was involved before that. And so, but the second reason my dad started Hobby Lobby, because he thought, wow, if I ever do succeed, I want to be able to give. Now, I told you, my grandparents were both pastors. I wanted six preachers. But my grandmother was kind of a widow's might giver. She didn't have a lot, but she would sew little doilies. She would sew things. And my grandfather said, why are you sewing things? Why are you? Well, I want to sell them, so I have a missions offering. I'm already giving in the missions offering. No, 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 I want my own missions offering. So my grandmother wanted to make sure she gave in the mission offering herself from income that she had. If you gave my mother a gift, and many times, where they were living the way it was, people didn't even have enough money to pay tithes, so they would give them food. So if you gave my mother a Christmas gift, or my grandmother a Christmas gift, you gave her anything, she took the value of that, added it up, and paid tithes on it. Even though her son didn't go to school with shoes on. And so, but she wanted to be a giver. So it's a widow's might giver. And so, she, my dad started Hobby Lobby hoping that someday that we could be generous. And so, and we have been able to do that. So we, our company is closed on Sunday. All of our competition is open on Sunday. We're not open on Sundays. We close at eight o'clock. Our minimum wage, in the United States, we have a minimum wage. We pay twice what the minimum wage is when we start. We have chaplains that service our employees. So we try to do as much as we can so that people can have work-life balance. I was at a meeting the other day. We have co-managers, new people who come on. And almost every one of them left the company they were at to come to Hobby Lobby, because they want to get work-life balance. So there are seasons that we get busy, Christmas and all that stuff. But we actually tell our employees, if you work too many hours, go somewhere else. Because we don't want to be a part of ruining your family. Many of these people said, I grew up, and my kids grew up, and I didn't even know who they were, because I was working 80, 90 hours a week. And so, we try to provide to our employees a work-life balance. So that's something that we can do. As a Christian witness, all of our employees are not Christian. We don't ask them, when they come to work for us, are you a Christian, or are you a believer? We don't ask that question. You just, you work hard and you do all that. But we do tell them, in our life, the most important thing is God. The second most important thing to us is family. And third is the job. The only way you can do that is to build a great organization. So if you can't build a good organization, you're probably not going to do well at Hobby Lobby. And so, so as we went along, my mom and dad worked in the business. My brother, my sister, my brother-in-law, myself. So it's pretty much a family business. We've all worked together for 47 years now. And so, but we had a couple that married in, and they didn't work in the business. So sometimes they felt like if they weren't in the business, they were, they felt like they were second-class. My dad felt second-class, because he wasn't a preacher. Our family, you feel second-class if you're not a businessperson. And so, I started really grappling with that. And so I really tried to argue with my wife and say, no, 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 you're more important than the business. I know that. I know my dad feels that way. That's the way I feel. Yeah, but when we go to dinner, you guys always talk about business, you know? And we do, right? Because that's what we know. And then, when my daughter-in-law came in the family, she said the same thing. So I said, all right, all right, I'm going to quit arguing. That's my, that's my wife's feeling. Don't, if your wife has feelings, they're real, you know? Don't argue out of them. Just, that's life, okay? I did that for a long time. Does not get you anywhere. That is reality. So that was her reality. And so, so about 10 years ago, we came together as a family and said, well, let's be more intentional about family. We love our family. We all love our family. We love our kids. We all want the best for our kids. We want the best for our spouses. So we came together and said, well, let's have a, we didn't have a mission statement. We have our business. Let's have a mission statement, a vision statement, and core values. And so, this is a picture of, of that document. You can't see it and read it, because you're not supposed to be able to see it and read it. Because this is our statements, so. But it has a vision there. You can see that. It has a mission. And then we have core values. And so, we put this together so it'll be very intentional for family. I told you, we have 35 family members. So 35 family members means there's a birthday about every week. And so, instead of going to birthdays all the time, once a month, we come together, the 35 of us, or whoever's in town, and those who are, it's their birthday month, so this is May. So all the birthday, all the people have birthdays in May, which we have two or three, on average. They have to stand up. They have to tell us about their life, what's going on. Or they just graduated from school. Were you going to college? Just got married? Whatever it is. Because I can't keep track of all 35 of them. And then two or three of us will affirm them and say, you know what? Uncle Steve really was patient with me. I really appreciate his help and all that stuff. So it's a time for us to be very intentional about family. We don't talk about the business. We don't do that. We talk about the family, and that gives us the time. Once a year, we have what we call a family celebration. We come together for four or five hours and go over our core values, our mission again, and talk about that. Our mission statement, and I put it on a coin, so all my family, I'm a symbol. I'm simple, but I'm also, this is a symbol, something to remember by. So I carry this every day. So on one side, it says our mission statement, which I think is to love God intimately and to live extravagant generosity. So that's why we want our family to be known about. If somebody says, well, who are, what are the Greens? What is their core value? At business, probably if you have your business, it has a mission statement, has some core values. Do you know what it is? And you maybe can recite those, and you hear those. But we had never done that for our family. And our family's more important than our business. So it was one of those small things we could do. It was really a big thing, and to come up with that. We want to love God intimately, live extravagant generosity. And we make sure people know generosity's not just about money. Sometimes you think, you hear generosity, oh, that's money. No, no, you have time, you have talent, you have other things that you can be generous with. Because some of our kids now are wanting to go on the mission field and do all that stuff. So they may make a lot of money in their life. So their generosity may be with their time and their talent. So we make sure that they understand and know that. So what I'm going to talk about a little bit here is that statement to love God intimately, because what did that mean to me? And so, this is a verse that I really, really, really like, because it kind of goes against everything my nature, not my nature, my culture tells me. And it says, "Don't let the wise brag of their wisdom. Don't let the heroes brag of their exploits. Don't let the rich brag of their riches." Now, this is the thing we always want to talk about. Hey, I'm smarter than you. I mean, I'd say that, but we, I want to, you know, impress people with my wisdom. Hey, I did this. We brag of our exploits, what we did, and/or our riches. So these are three things our culture actually tells us to build up. And yet, the Scripture says, those aren't important things. Those are not important things. "If you brag, brag of this and this only, that you understand and know Me." So when I read that verse, I thought, that's what it means to love God intimately, to understand and know Christ. This morning, we sing about in His presence. We wanted to be in His presence. Jesus is here with us. The Holy Spirit is here with us. His presence is with us. And that's more important than anything. So for me, if I had a wish for 7.4 billion people on earth, it'd simply be that they love God intimately. Because they have an intimate relationship with God, the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. You've got everything that you need in this life. And for eternity, you've got it all, all right? Because this life is short. I think eternally. And so, I want to think about eternity. And so, this is a key verse for us as we think about that. And so, so then I started thinking, well, how do you, how do you love God intimately? You know, we made that statement. So I said, well, I'm going to start trying to document, what are the ways that I've gotten intimate with the Lord? And so, there's several ways. Some of these are very obvious to you. The first one I have is absorbing the Bible. I used to say engaging the Bible, but sometimes you can engage something. I may have engaged with you and shook your hand, but I didn't get to know you, you know? Because I didn't have time to do that. But to absorb somebody means it comes inside of you. And to me, it's like a sponge. So when a sponge absorbs something, it, and you squeeze it, what comes back out? Your testimony is usually when you get squeezed. When you're successful, people aren't as oppressed as you as when you're squeezed. And so, when I get squeezed, when life hurts me, I hope that Christ comes back out, and that's what I want to live. And so, the second one. And so, the verse here is, "Pay attention, come close now. Listen carefully to My life-giving, life-nourishing words." My little tagline in life, all my emails end with this, and that is, "This book is alive." And I mean that in two ways. This book is alive. When I open it and read it, it's alive. It speaks to me. Oh my goodness, I've talked to other people in other languages. The book speaks to them, in French, in Spanish, in African, all the languages of the world. This book is the only book that can speak to anybody on this planet, because this book is alive. But it also means that I have to live my faith out. Because if somebody doesn't believe the Scripture, the best thing for me is that my life is a living example. So when I say this book is alive, I want to be a living witness of the Bible. The second one that I have here, whoops, is interceding in prayer. And it says, "Don't fret or worry. Instead of worrying, pray. Let petitions and praise shape your worries into prayers. Letting God know your concerns." This is another way we get intimate with God, is our prayers. When we pray to the Lord, we're intimate with Him. We're telling Him what our needs are. Hopefully, we're asking Him to guide our life, to take control of our lives. So it helps us to readjust each day as we pray. And so, we know that prayer is an obvious one of these ones. This one I added not too long ago. It was obvious, but I just didn't, because I'm not a music person. I can't sing. I can't do that. I enjoy, when people sing, I enjoy the songs we had this morning. But I realized that I get intimate to the Lord through songs many times. There's intimate moments. There's moments, maybe even today, that your heart was touched and deeply, you felt God's presence, because it was sung. So my third one under worship is glorifying God in song. "On your feet now, applaud God. Bring a gift of laughter. Sing yourself into His presence." So we know that songs takes us into His presence. So under worship, which is my first major point, was absorbing the Bible, interceding in prayer, and glorifying God in song. The next category I had is the Holy Spirit. And of course, that's what we're talking about a lot here. I feel like the Holy Spirit is another way that gets intimate with us. One is listening. In John 16:12 and 13, it tells us, "I still have many things to tell you." So the Bible wasn't the end. Yes, the Bible is our total authority. But God told us, "I still have things to tell you. When I leave, I'm going to tell you things, but you can't handle them now. But when the friend comes, the Spirit, the Holy Spirit of the truth, He will take you by the hand and guide you into all the truth there is." So that we know that when Jesus was here, He was only in one place at a time. He never appeared seven times in seven places at the same time. But He says, "It's better that I go for you, because if I go away, I'm going to send the Holy Spirit." So the Holy Spirit lives inside of each one of you. So He can speak to you, He can talk to you. So that's my intimacy with Him. And if I will listen. Now, we live in a busy world. So I have to almost force myself to be still and quiet, which is part of the next one here, which is meditating. And so, this is probably the hardest one for me, and that's to be still, all right? I'm a business guy. My mind's always going, right? So for me to be still, I almost have to say, I'm going to stop. And I do that on Sundays now. I used to even on Sundays. Now I stop. I say, no, no, Sabbath is for rest and to be recreated. God created for six days. I worked for six days. I need to be recreated that seventh day. And if we trust God, He can help us do that. And it tells us to meditate. "Be still and know that I am God. I will be exalted among the nations." And I used to know that half of the verse. Be still and know that I'm God. I'll be exalted among the nations. And I'll be exalted in the earth. So I'm thinking, no, 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 Lord, I got to do a bunch of stuff. But He's actually telling me, when I'm still and I know Him, He'll be exalted among the nations and exalted in the earth. And so, so to be still, meditate upon the Lord. And the third one, empowered. I use the word from empower. We got, you have Empowered 21. You'll receive power when the Holy Spirit comes on you. We heard Acts 1 and 8. Several speakers this morning spoke from Acts 1 and 8. So we know that we can be empowered by the Holy Spirit to go out and serve. So yes, we meditate. I want to be still and listen, but I also know that I'm going to be empowered to go out. So, so the next major category that I have is generosity. And so, I never really thought about generosity being an intimacy until I read in a book, generosity is a gateway to intimacy with God. And I thought, oh, I'm trying to put together a document on intimacy, and you're telling me generosity is. And I'm thinking, of course it is. What did I do when I wanted to court my wife? Where'd my money go? It went to my wife, right? I started spending money on her, because I wanted to court her. I bought her flowers. I took her out to eat. I did all these things. So where your heart is, where your money is, your heart will go. And so, and I say there's, I put five things under this. You've got time. You can be generous with your time. Some of you may, we're in a situation where my, my wife's parents are getting of age. We have to spend time with them. They can't do what they did before. We have to help them get their medications.[1238.58] We have to do that. So we give our time. We, we want to be generous with our time to our family and to others. Uh, talent, some of us take our talents. We go out and help people. We volunteer, we do things. So you're, that's a generosity. Treasure, that's, that's finances, that's giving. Thanksgiving, there are people who are thankful all the time. You just talk to them, you just want to be around them, right? Are there, you probably can think of somebody, you say, you know, I like being around them because every time I leave, I kind of feel a little bit better. Because they find the good in you and they just say it. They're very thankful, that kind of a spirit. And then trust. Sometimes, uh, in life, you build trust. And so I have trust with certain people. And sometimes when my friend needs help, I may take one friend, introduce him to another friend because I've built that trust and, and do that. And so we were able to do that. So you can be generous with your trust. Or you may say, no, I'm not going to help any of my friends or they, they. So there's lots of things we, we can be generous with. Couple of verses here, uh, John three sixteen, for God so loved the world he gave. He loved the world, he did what? He gave, right? So when you love somebody, when I loved my wife, I gave to her. And so God asks, it's about the same thing. We so love God, we give. God, what do you want me to give? Is it my time, my talent, my treasure? And then the second one, Matthew six twenty-one says, for where your treasure is, there your heart will be also. The next category is governance. Now, this is a really a weird one and I just added this one about a month ago. Governance, governance is how you run a business. You do all that kind of stuff. I'm like, no, governance and generosity, I mean intimacy, those words never on the same sentence for me. Till I read this verse, and this comes out if it's on two screens here. This is from, uh, Second Chronicles one, seven and eight, and then ten through twelve. Cause when, if you told me, what did Solomon pray for? It's an easy answer. Everybody knows, Solomon prayed for what? Wisdom, right? That night appeared to Solomon and said to him, ask for whatever you want me to give you. All right, so God has given Solomon a blank check. Ask for whatever you want. Solomon answered, God, give me wisdom. That's what we just said, right? We all know that, and knowledge. That, oh, there's more to that. That I may lead this people. He wanted, he wanted wisdom for a particular thing, and that's to lead people. For who's able to govern, there's the word govern, this people, great people of yours. I mean, I'm in charge of everybody. I don't know how to govern these people. We all have had that situation, right? If you ever, if you ever worked with people, people are difficult. I'm difficult, you're difficult. That's just the way life is. God said to Solomon, since this is your heart's desire and you have not asked for wealth, possessions, or honor, nor the death of your enemies. That would've been a nice one. Yeah, just kill all my enemies. That would've been a nice request, yeah. And since you've not asked for a long life. So God knew all the things we could've asked for, right? Kill them. Uh, but for wisdom and knowledge to govern my people. There it is again. I'm going to give you wisdom to govern people over whom I made you king. Therefore, wisdom and knowledge will be given to you and also give you wealth, possessions and honor, Second Chronicles. All right, so you think about this whole, you could govern in intimacy. If me and my wife divorce, right? I have three children, four children, three, I was one of them, four children. All four of them are being impacted by that. Their intimacy with God is going to be harder. Now, God can still do that, of course he can. If a pastor fails, has a moral failure, we've had that happen in America. It breaks our heart every time it happens. But when that pastor has a moral failure, intimacy with God just got harder for some people. Because they put a lot of trust in that person. In a business, when something goes wrong, when they're not treated right. So I realized, wow, if I can govern myself, first I need to govern myself, my own actions. Can I govern Mark Green? Can I be a good governance of my fam, my wife, with my wife? Can I have good governance with my family? These are all things that allow me to be more intimate with God, but actually allows others around me to be more intimate with God. So, uh, that's a, one of the, what I call gateways to intimacy. The next one is brokenness. Uh, and we all are wounded. There's nobody in this room that's not wounded. We all have gotten wounded. Nobody got through this life easy. And so under broke, so we're all broken people. We all know that. Wounds is one of my categories under brokenness. This verse in Saint Corinthians is one I love. Praise be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of compassion, the God of all comfort, who comforts us in all our troubles, so that we can comfort those in any trouble with the comfort we ourselves have received from God. And so, um, this tells us that you will get wounded. We have a Comforter. The Holy Spirit is a Comforter. That's one of his titles. God comforts us and he heals you. Now, sometimes we get healed and we don't want anybody to know. We don't want, we don't want people to know where we're broken. We hide our brokenness. But God actually says, no, no, that's one of your ministries. Show me your scars, I'll show you your ministry. One time I made a, a movie and the guy who wrote the movie says, if I'm going to write a story, if I'm going to write the story, if I don't make a movie of your life, I'm going to look for your deepest wound. Cause the deepest wound is where the flower grows. So what he's saying is the story of your life is probably in your deepest wound. Cause God takes your deep wound, heals it, and just takes it right back against Satan. So whatever, wherever Satan wounded you actually is your, could be one of your ministries. Now, there's other places in life that you can be ministered from, but that's a great place that that can happen. And so, so the other one under, another one under, uh, brokenness is communion. Whoever eats my flesh and break, and drinks my blood remains in me and I in them. Just as the living Father sent me and I live because of the Father, so the one who feeds on me will live because of me. This is the bread that came down from heaven. Your ancestors are manna and die, but whoever feeds on this bread will live forever. Luke six. So we know that we break the bread. It's a brokenness. Christ's body was broken for us. So I believe that when I take communion, it's a time of intimacy with God. Now, I can just take it as just habit and all that stuff, but I really want to try to slow myself down, as I said earlier. It's hard for me to be still. Whenever we offer communion at my particular church, probably once a month, I want to say, no, Lord, this is a time for me to get intimate with you. I want to remember your death. You broke for me. You paid the price. We all know what Christ did on the cross. He was broken and bruised and wounded for us. And so communion is an incredible time for intimacy with God. Another time is fasting and I have a whole story on fasting and what God's done in my life that I won't go into. But fasting, it says, an ax, while they were worshiping the Lord and fasting, the Holy Spirit said, set apart for me Barnabas and Saul for the work to which I have been called them. Many of you may have practiced fasting and know that's a time that you get more intimate with God. I say, God doesn't speak any louder when you're fasting. You just listen better, right? Because you're attuned to it. You've taken one of the things that your body wants, which is food, and said, I'm going to say no to that. And I'm going to spend time not eating so I can listen to the Lord. And so he speaks to us, so it's a great time for intimacy with God. The next one is forgiving. Uh, in prayer, there's a connection between what God does and what you do. You can't get forgiveness from God, for instance, without forgiving others. If you refuse to do your part, you cut yourself off from God. So that's the opposite of intimacy. If you don't want to be intimate with somebody, you're cut off from them, all right? So how do you get cut off from God? Don't forgive others, okay? Because he's going to forgive you. And so God says, if you'll forgive others, I forgive you. This brings you closer to God, okay? Cause if you don't, you're going to be further from him. And then, another one that I know more about by other people telling me than having experienced is persecution. And so Romans tells us, not only so, but we also glory in our sufferings. Because we also know that suffering produces perseverance, perseverance, character and character, hope. And hope does not put us to shame because God's love has been poured into our hearts through the Holy Spirit who has been given. And so, again, you've heard stories, talked to people, they've gone through persecution, been put in prison. We've heard about some stories and stuff like that. But somehow there's an intimate moment that God has with people. Now, this is one of the ones I don't want to sign up for, okay? And so, now, the wounds, all the rest of them happen. This is one I'm not signing up for. I'm not volunteering for this one. But I know that intimacy can happen and should that be the, the choice that happens someday. And so, uh, so anyway, I went through all of that, back to family, vision, mission and core values. So in our situation, because of our business and because we were a family business, it caused us to think through all these things. And how can we do that? How can we share our values? And, uh, one of the core values that you can't read on this slide, I don't think, and it wasn't intended for you to read them, by the way. So, uh, is, is, uh, says this, spread God's word to all the world. For whatever reason, our family is just super passionate about God's word. Now, again, I don't worship the Bible, all right? Cause that's not the end goal. Why do I want people to have the Bible? So they can love God intimately. So my goal is not seven point five billion people have a Bible. My goal is that seven point five people, billion people love God intimately. But I can't imagine my life with my intimacy with God if I didn't have the Bible. Take the Bible out of your life, all right? It's tough, right? How are you going to have intimacy with God if you don't have his word? Cause that's his communication. You're not intimate with, don't go, don't talk to your spouse for six months, all right? You're going to lose intimacy. God's word is his way of speaking to us. And so, yes, we're passionate about God's word for a reason, so that they can have an intimate relationship with God. And so, uh, that's one of our core values. Um, it was in nineteen, um, seventy-two, I mean nineteen seventy-two, nineteen ninety-eight, when I went down to Guatemala. And I was going down there after a Bible dedication and, um, this people group had waited forty years to get God's word in their heart language. It started in nineteen fifty-eight. So I'm born in nineteen sixty-one. This people group has been waiting for their Bible longer than I've been alive. They've been working on it longer than I've been alive. And so, uh, so we get down there and, um, then I found out there's only thirty thousand speakers. And then only eight thousand could read. There's only a thousand believers and only four hundred believers could read. Well, I just spent a lot of money and only four hundred people could read it. So as a business person, I said, this is not a good return on investment. Why do we do this? I should've asked more questions. I mean, I just assumed there's hundreds of thousands of people that could read this language. So I was asking what a business person calls the ROI question, the return on investment. Is this a good return on investment to spend your money on a people group and only four hundred of them can read it? Well, I'm going to go back home and make some more money and I'll do that again. I don't know what to tell the people who spent forty years of their life. They went down there when they're thirty and now they're seventy years old and they finally got the thing done and four hundred people can read it. Then I went to the dedication and this moment right here happened. And this is Gaspar, he's one of the four translators and he's weeping to get that Bible, okay? Now, I've been asking the return on investment question, right? So I'm grappling with it. I, I shouldn't have done this. I wish I hadn't done this. And the Holy Spirit prompted me at this moment right here, February the seventh, nineteen eighty-eight, uh, why don't you go tell Gaspar, he's not a good return on investment? Oh, like a dagger in my heart. I mean, I, I've been grappling about this, saying it's not worth it and he's weeping over it? And yet I have fifty Bibles in my home and I don't read God's word. So God then questioned, what kind of return on investment is Mark Green? I've had everything poured into me. And so I made a vow the next day to read God's word every day for the rest of my life. I just celebrated twenty years of reading God's word every single day. Uh, because of Gaspar weeping over something, uh, after I thought he wasn't worth it. And so, uh, so then after that, um, I started, we started an alliance in twenty-ten and these, you may be familiar with some of these companies, Wikivile Bible Translators, Biblicalus, Seed Company, United Bible Society, Deaf Bible Society. Didn't know it, there's three hundred and fifty sign languages in the world. We have one New Testament. We have about seventeen that have something. There's a lot of the people who are deaf in sign language. So, um, so I made a, 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 I called all these guys together. Again, the trust that I had built, because I had relationships with all these people. I said, well, you guys fly to the Dallas airport, resource partners. I had four other guys like me, business guys. And I said, let's come together and let's figure out how to wait to make sure that all six thousand languages have God's word in their heart language. Today, on, around numbers, two thousand people groups have a New Testament. Two thousand, somebody's translating, two thousand, nobody started. So after nineteen hundred years, when Jesus has been gone, we're halfway there. So we said, you know what? That ain't going to work. And just like in Power Twenty-One picked twenty thirty-three, we picked twenty thirty-three. So we said, by twenty thirty-three, we believe that ninety-five percent of the world will have a full Bible. Ninety-nine point nine 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 six will have a New Testament. My business friends say, come on, ninety-nine point nine 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 six, that's a hundred, just round up, right? That's what you normally would do. I said, no, 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 because that's point zero 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 four and on seven point five billion, that's three million people. So we believe that everybody, they'll have at least a portion of scripture by twenty-three. So it's not a finished goal. It's what we call an all-access goal. And so these, we meet in the Dallas airport. We've met almost eighty times. We meet there once a month, every single month, strategizing, how are we going to work together? How are we going to work together? Which is basically the same thing that Power Twenty-One is doing, is bringing everybody together of different places and different things, coming together and saying, how are we going to make sure everybody has a witness? Cause I'm thinking, guys, how are you going to witness to everybody if you don't have scripture? So we want to get ahead. So how do you plan a church without scripture? I mean, you can do it. I'm not saying it can't be done. Sometimes you can do it in a, a second language. But I'm saying, no, God would speak to you in the same language you either proposed to your wife or you're opposed to, all right? He would speak your heart language. So that's why we're passionate about that. So we've started building some tools together. One of those is a digital Bible library. I'll go quickly through these. Obviously, we live in a digital world. Ten years ago, most of the texts were not digital. And so we built one digital Bible library. We centralized them, digitized them, standardized them, so they're all in one spot. So that allows other people to use them. Uh, we have a, an event called Illuminations where we actually bring all ten presidents together. So all ten presidents are, are in the same room. The donors are all in the same room. And instead of talking about their ministry, we all talk about one thing. Cause our goal is real simple. We're going to eradicate Bible poverty, all right? There's people without scripture. We're going to eradicate Bible poverty by twenty thirty-three. And so we're going to do that through Illuminations. Uh, this is a, this is a website you can go to. It's still in beta format. It's called illuminations.bible. And so the, all six thousand languages will be there. It'll show the languages. We're still getting the information from everybody. So everybody has to share information. And so that's all happening and it'll be centralized. Uh, and then my brother, uh, built a museum of the Bible in Washington DC. It's an amazing place. There's one room that I'm, I'm passionate about and this is the Illuminations room. So you can see the name Illuminations is the name that we're using. This is a room, you can kind of see in this picture, this is actually, uh, twenty-six hundred square feet. It's a huge room. It's bigger than this room here and it's got all six thousand languages on display. So on the right-hand side there, those, the two thousand languages that are done, they're all sitting on the shelf with the language marked on them. Then across here, you can't see, but there's some orange ones. These orange ones have the language name and they're orange and it says, in process. Somebody's working on them. And there's two thousand yellow ones that breaks your heart when you walk up to them because they say, not yet begun. So in the next fifteen years, there's not going to be any orange or yellow Bibles in here. Now, as our last speaker, that's two, that ain't going to happen if you think about, you know, Dr. Wood told us, if you think, if I look at it, what I have and all that stuff, it ain't going to happen. But by faith, we believe that God's word is going to be in everybody's heart language by twenty thirty-three. And so that's what this shows. We talked about that already, the ninety-five, the ninety-nine. And we even have a translation prayer. So we have a prayer that we all pray around the world. It's a six-line prayer that, uh, that I won't go over. Real quick here to end, and then the beneficiary of that, because now that we've digitized all these, there's people who use them. The Jesus film used the text, audio used the text. A new one is that you may have this app on your phone or a different one. This is the U version Bible app. So we digitized all these and so instead of U version, have to go all around the world to get the rights. They're all in one spot. And so, uh, this app is one of the most popular apps in the world, actually. Uh, in one minute, a hundred people are going to download the Bible in the next minute. That's a million this week. A million Bibles are going to be downloaded this week. You know how much it costs to print and ship and move a million Bibles? Now, I hope people still have a print Bible and all that. But some people don't. Some people live in countries, they, it risks their life to have a Bible. They can have it on their phone. So they do that. Nine thousand, nine hundred times the app, it's open every minute. Thirty-six thousand people load a new chapter of text. Nine thousand people start listening to an au, chapter every minute, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. This is the average minute, okay? Two hundred and forty new daily reading plans are started, four hundred and eighty text messages. Three thousand, four hundred and twenty people are going to highlight a verse this minute. And hundred and twenty existing daily reading plans completed. So three hundred and ten million people have downloaded this app. And when you download, it's in one thousand, two hundred languages. The only app that has two hundred languages. The most translated book I could find is Pinocchio, uh, about a liar. And you got, uh, two hundred and ninety languages. The New Testament's already in twenty-one hundred. And so, so what I'm saying is, for us, business, my dad started Hobby Lobby to take care of his family. But he also knew he was going to be giving. So I always go back to the seed of something. So why did Hobby Lobby not go public? Why did we not sell out? Why do we stay a separate family business? So this is a seed. I, you probably can't see it. What kind of seed is this? You don't know, right? But by the fruit, you know what it looks like, right? It's an, this is an apple seed, all right? I always want to know how something started. Why did you start your church? Why did this happen? If you'll go back to that seed, forty-seven years later, this is the fruit that came off that seed. Cause my dad committed to Hobby Lobby to be a giving machine. So somebody said, hey, we can make you rich if you'll sell that company. We said, we don't care. We don't want to be rich. We want to be rich in giving. So the reason we built this, the seed, which he has to provide for family, the seed, the reason we built our business was so we could give. And so that's the fruit that you have. So your beginnings are important. What's the seed? Your seed determines your fruit. And so, uh, so that's what we allowed to do as business. We believe, my dad calls himself, he felt second class as a business person. And then the first time he made a faith gift, it was bigger than he thought. Kind of like God put it, will you give that guy thirty thousand dollars? And my dad's like, no, I don't have thirty thousand. But God kept a convict to my dad. So he went to the guy and gave him four checks for seventy-five hundred. He said, don't cash them until I call you. Seventy-five hundred, August, September, October, November, I'll call you. But it's, if it's mine, it's yours, you know, kind of that faith gift. And on that plane back, he said, no, 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 you, God, uh, convicted my dad, you're anointed to be a business person, okay? So I hear anointing with pastor and minister, but you're anointed in your business. Whatever you work, wherever you go, you're anointed. And so go out and live your life. And we get to do it six days a week or seven, wherever you work. So again, thank you for the time and I'll turn it to our host here. So thank you.
Let's give Matt a very big round of applause. Fantastic. This is a, a life example of what business can do to help change the world. Uh, just let me introduce my, myself again. My name is Mudise Muathludi. Uh, I'm the Secretary General of Empower Twenty-One in Southern Africa. Uh, I'm also a businessman. I run an investment company called Muathludi Group. And, uh, by training and practice, I'm an investment banker. Uh, I'm also a pastor of a church in northwest of Johannesburg. It's called AFM Honeyju Community Church. And I'm excited to be here and we thank God for all of you. So the idea was to take questions after Matt's presentation. But I thought we should perhaps ask every speaker just to present and please write your questions down. And then we'll engage after all the presentations, uh, that we have received. I know it's a bit hot in here, so if you don't mind, if you feel a bit hot, those who are sitting next to the windows, can you please open them? This building was just completed for us to use it. So the aircon is not yet installed, but we thank God for the host church to let us, uh, use the building. So the vision of the Christian Business Network for Empower Twenty-One is that every person in Africa who'd have an authentic encounter with Jesus through the power and presence of the Holy Spirit by Pentecost twenty thirty-three. So we are here as business people to think ways of how we can make this vision a reality to help impact every business person on our continent with the gospel of Jesus Christ through the power of the Holy Spirit. And then to break down that vision, uh, the team that has been meeting over the months to think, uh, perhaps of ideas they can, uh, put on the table for today. One is to inspire and facilitate Christian business people to work together in impacting their environment for ethical business practices, especially in Africa. There's been allegations of fraud and corruption. So we want to rise as Christian business people, uh, to, uh, be good stewards of God's resources and do it ethically and morally. Secondly, to reach other business people in Africa to have an encounter with the person of the Lord Jesus Christ through the power and the presence of the Holy Spirit. So we need to think of ways of how we can do this in the marketplace. Thirdly, to transform the business world in Africa to operate with a kingdom, uh, consciousness and mindset. Uh, we know that there are various, uh, 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 business, uh, methods and economic systems, capitalism and all that. But what is the kingdom, uh, system that we can implement, uh, particularly in Africa as business people coming from the continent? And the last, uh, uh, thought was to encourage business people to use their resources to serve their local communities. And Matt and his family have been a very good example and he articulated that very clearly for us. So, so those are the thoughts that we, we, we thought perhaps as we gather here, uh, we must have them as takeaways and perhaps engage on them, uh, before the end of the session to say, how do we do this? And how do we, uh, do we move this forward? I know Church of Pentecost has got the business network going and AFM International has got a business network going and we've collaborated with them. And if there are other churches and denominations that are here that have got business networks, we are, we are, we, we, we want to collaborate uh, under the, the, the banner of Empower Twenty-One so that we can assist each other and be able to do business better for God's glory. And also to do business amongst ourselves. One of the objectives is to help Africa to trade, uh, between, uh, the different, uh, uh, countries on the continent. Uh, so, so that's the idea. So the next speaker is none other than Dr. Joseph Shaw Ajopong. I hope I've, I've pronounced that correctly. They will, they will correct me. Okay, please help me.
Thirteenth born of seventeen children. My mother, my mother was a second born, second wife of three wives of my father. So we have a large family like Matt. And ours is small. We will, we will grow about roughly about fifty now. And so I was born in a village, village life, never dreamt of coming to the city. Saw a very harsh shape condition. Fortunately, I came to the city to start life by my elderly brother migrating from the village. And all happened was that my father was a photographer. So he started a business in the line with, uh, Dave, uh, that's Matt's father. But he was taking more of the photo and then trying to have the frame around it, like photo framing. And someone told him that, look, when you get into farming, you'll be very, very rich. So he, in fact, moved all the farms and everything and then started to go deeper everywhere area. Got a very belong and started into farming. And that was the collapse of the business. So we all have to then migrate from the city back to the village. Uh, what happened was my name was initially Felix. I wasn't called Joseph. My father told me and my mother, in fact, I class two, primary class two. My name was Felix, Felix Ajapong. It happened that when my mother was pregnant and went to the village to give birth. Uh, you know, when you marry three wives, uh, you need for others to also occupy space to, uh, give pregnant, to get pregnant. So when, the traditional way is that when one get pregnant, go and give birth whilst I also occupied that space with that as well. And that's happened that when I was, my, the birth time of me came in the village of my mother in the central region and I, it was giving birth. My mother named me because my father was in there. So it was class two. When my father saw my name, he said, no, no, you are not called Felix. You are Joseph because the man was in there. And that changed my name to Joseph. And I thank him for the name giving me Joseph. So through that, I, my ambition, in fact, I moved to the primary education, went to, and then went to the secondary, the tertiary education. My ambition was to be an engineer or a pilot, a marine engineer or pilot. I like the way they dress and the way they behave. And along the side, my mother got very, very seriously ill. So my father told me that, look, I don't have money. Your mother too, who is taking care of the family is very, very ill. And you are seventeen children in all. I can, so what I can do is that, go and support your mother at the stationary. My mother was a trader in front of someone's shop, not her own, squatting. So, uh, one night close from school, my father told me, I said, okay, I, I'm not going to just shave off my vision of marine engineer or pilot to do that. And one day, what I did was, I was praying in a hall. I sleep at the hall because the bedroom is eight by twelve and the six children are there with my mother. So I don't have a space, so I always sleep at the hall. When the visitor want to come, I have to just pack my things in the early morning and then goes to hide some place. and then goes to hire some place. So one day I was praying in the hall. I heard the voice, "Obey thy father and mother, that it will be successful with you." I took that, I worked bitterly the whole day that my ambition and my vision and everything is diminished. But I said, "I'll obey my father." So I started going to the shop, stopped schooling at my technical education. I even picked forms for the polytechnic to even pursue to the university. I stopped everything. I got admission, no school fees and fees, so I stopped it and following my mother. And that's how far the Lord has brought me. So the case I'm sharing you, each of them, the Holy Spirit enabled me to create each of them. I never inherited a business. I never was trained by any kind of professional person. And I humbly want to share with you how the Holy Spirit create businesses out of nothing. So I humbly want to share with the Bible's position on money and business. God's reason for calling all of us here. What helps grow your business? The concept of networking and I'll conclude. Men of God and Reverend Ministers and all people here, please. There's one thing that is a wave that is moving that is very good of this Empower Twenty-One, that we must live a life to empower generations through the Holy Spirit. Twenty years back, when we talk about money in the Christendom, it becomes something which is unspiritual in quote. We tell me that it was a secondary thing to discuss. Now, when you look at this generation, the generation that are coming are looking at at things that are very, very new, things that, the things that are very flashy. If it is a vehicle, if it is a phone, it is a written, and all boils down to money. So I say that we shouldn't be praying for people to come to God, encounter God. Then we teach them how to make wealth. Then we leave them to not handle the wealth well, then they become a liability. So you don't become a minister who is always praying for people to get health, get success. Then you leave them to handle the way they want to handle the money. Then they came back again, then you pray for them. So I want us to look at the Bible's position on money. The Bible talks about money more than it talks about health. So when you are preaching health, preach more of money, more of success. Money and possessions are the second most referenced topic in the Bible. This morning, we heard about healing be one, but money is the second one. Then money is mentioned more than eight hundred times in the Bible. Five hundred verses in the Bible you have on faith. So when you are preaching faith is good. You have five hundred verses on prayer, but you have two thousand verses on money. Out of the thirty-six parables Jesus gave, sixteen talks about money and possessions. In the gospel, one out of ten verses deals directly with the subject of money. Fifteen percent of Jesus' teaching was on money and possessions. So money is a vital thing. Something about business is what we have to teach people, teach them. We're talking this morning about our life impacting, we being the true picture. The Lord did not call us into poverty. The Bible says that because of our poverty, He became poor, that we may have become rich. So we must not leave wealth and success. We should be teaching, we should be, every minister must learn about economics by strategy. Because the young and the youth of this age know so many things through the internet that when you are teaching them and you are not balancing your teaching, you, they swear away and get to other places where they can get to that. So this is to show that Jesus was teaching about money because after your life and prayer and faith and everything, you have to live your life on money. After your prayer and fasting, you have to eat and then you need money. Peter Grandwich is a Wall Street stockbroker. And I was studying about him. In fact, he, what he did was he buys stocks and sells stocks and everything. And this gentleman got challenged in business. That things was very difficult for him. But he made a statement here, says, "The Bible is an excellent financial advisor, whether or not you are religious." So you can go to Harvard, Yale, go to Oxford, everything. But he's recommending that the Bible, of which Matt was saying, is the excellent... So when you are minister of God and you have the Bible, you even supersede someone who is at Harvard. If you are going to look at the details of all the financial issues and the wealth issues and how to have management, you could remember that Jesus was talking about the talents, talking about the shoe business manager, talking about so many, it's all about management and governance as we just said. Now, let's look at why you were called. You were called to empower generations. You were created to solve problems. So every human being is created to solve problems. In the Garden of Eden, Adam was there to solve problems. So you must be a balanced, complete minister or a man of God who in spiritual aspect you cover, in physical aspect, whatever about economics, about strategy, about everything, you must learn to know it so that you can preach to people and win them. When you look at the elite and those who are rich men and businessmen, what communication do you communicate to them? How do you balance them? You must pray for someone to get wealth. You must be interested of how is managing the wealth so that he doesn't swerve away because money is very powerful. Sometime when you get rich, it can move away. So you were created to empower generations. And John fifteen says that, "You did not choose me, but I chose you. And I pointed you so that you might go and bear fruit, a fruit that will last." You must not have members that are making wealth today, the next day they are in poverty. They are being misled by other people of the worldly to follow them and then swerve away. When someone become wealthy, then he start looking for new vehicles, new buildings, new things. His fruit must last. So we must not have a graph of rich people within the church that today they are off. How can we go to the worldly people to be starting begging for money for our crusade and other things? When we are having harvest and other things, then we are moved, no, we, our fruit must last. We must not have a fruit that have not last. So that is what the Lord Jesus is saying, that when He calls us, we will bear fruit. And your fruit, if you are wealthy, you continued and continued and continuing and your worthiness should affect your generation. Not that your children will come and be struggling. Not that your, your generation will come and be struggling. Now, these are some of examples of worthy men in the Bible that we have Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, Joseph, Solomon, Job, Joseph Arimatia, Phoebe, Lydia. These are all people that they were blessed. They were caught and were blessed. Now, this is a statistics that sometimes we think that those people who are sheiks, who are in the mountains, in the gulf, are more rich people. Thirteen point one million years in the world, seven point five, that's fifty-six of them identify themselves as Christians. So when we are talking about the Holy Spirit empowering us, yes, this is the picture. With the millionaires of the world, fifty-six point two percent of them are Christians. So Christians, we must thank God that the Holy Spirit called us to dignify us. Out of poverty, He dignifies us. Everything that a Christian does is, should be well. The Bible says that, Paul said that, "Look, I planted a seed. Apollo watered on it, but it's the Lord who make it grow." Everything you plant with Jesus will grow. So this is a source of it, that, um, Christians, we are worthy people. So it's not all the time trying to make sure that the worthy people are somewhere and we are also somewhere. We must let our generation and the members know that we are worthy and everything you do should be well. This is a humble beginning of my story, that in the year nineteen ninety-five, when I started as a commissioner, uh, agent, what I do is that I go to shops. I wasn't having anything, so go to printing press. I can come to you and then ask for order of any printing. Then I'll go to any big printing press and then give the order to them and just take a commission. So you can start business without nothing. That's how Jesus, out of nakedness, God can dignify you and clothe you. I want that's how we, we must believe that the Holy Spirit don't want your effort. He want your belief. And then He will take your nothing and bring it to something. If you have something, then you don't need the Holy Spirit. Just empty yourself. So what I do is that I can move everywhere, the streets of Accra, ask for any kind of job. If I don't have it, I just contact someone and the person will give. So I started, this is a small shop in the nineteen ninety-five. That was the beginning of the story, a small place. My mother, uh, my blessed, of a blessed memory gave me, that is three dollars. And I started and asked someone to rent the place, just about eight by ten. And I was just commission, I would just go to a place and just take orders and start printing up. Then I brought this two years from nineteen ninety-five, two years. How did this happen? I was there and then the change of Pentecost, one of the pastors, um, just gave me an information. In business, what you need is information. May the Holy Spirit give you information. If you want to be wealthy, just information. Just get to know what is happening. So the pastor just told me that the Church of Pentecost is celebrating their fiftieth anniversary and they have T-shirts they want to print. I didn't have any machine, any idea, but I told them I would do it because with God or myself, I can do anything.